I'm calling to order this meeting of the Silver City. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Silver City Town Council. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the products which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome everybody on this beautiful sunny morning. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does any of the council want to make changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
There are no changes. Next is council comments. First will be Councilor Beddison.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to congratulate Counselor Canno, Counselor Eamon Smith, Judge Ruiz, and also Mayor Lanier for being reelected. I'm sorry I wasn't here on Monday, but hopefully we can take a full council picture when everybody's feeling better and more alive at the next meeting. So I'm very excited about the fact that we have everybody back again and we're all working together to move Silver City forward, so that's exciting. So I want to just give some brief updates on what I was doing in Washington DC. I was attending the National League of Cities Conference, the Congressional City Conference, as recently as yesterday, so I'm a little punchy because a plane came in late, but thank goodness the pilot was excellent and landed it despite the really strong winds out of the airport. So we were all very thankful. So first up was, we met with all of our Congressional, no, we met with either our Congressional delegation or their aides on Wednesday, the New Mexico Municipal League did, with the executive committee members in attendance, I'm the current Vice President, and also with some other folks from other towns in New Mexico that had attended. Prior to that, there were a number of meetings, the priorities for the National League of Cities, and the first one I want to talk about is the transportation priority because currently the administration has placed in their budget a fairly large, well, they keep adjusting the transportation bill. But the transportation bill where municipalities and counties would have to give an 80% match to 20% federal funding. So of course, the National League of Cities wants it to be reversed. We also want it to come directly to municipalities. We don't want it to go through the state or through counties where there's always an admin fee, administrative fee, taken off the top, which means there's less money to go around. So that was the push. I understand from Senator Udall, who was there, also Representative Ben Ray Lujan's aide, and Representative Michelle Lujan-Grisom, who was there. Senator Martin Heinrich was absent, he had a family emergency here in New Mexico and had to leave. So that they are all working with the other sides of the aisle to ensure that this is something that's not going to harm municipalities in particular, because we can't afford to do that. They're also protecting CDBG monies, Community Development Block Grant monies, because once again, that is something that the current administration wants to remove entirely from the process. So just for folks to know, in Silver City, we use that heavily for infrastructure and for large municipalities, they use it for senior programs for Wheels on Wheels, things like that. So it's really critical to us, and if I'm not mistaken, some of the CDBG money comes to us in the form of colonias as well. So we get sort of a double option to get funding. So that's the transportation package. The various groups that we talked to, the various Congressional folks that we talked to, were all in support of increasing the amount for the transportation package so that it goes across the United States. And the whole point of it is, is that federal dollars are needed and that municipalities should only be providing a small fraction of what's needed, because these are used by truckers and all these other people, not just the people in our communities. So there's that one. The second one is the US Census update. Good news and bad news. Let me get the bad news right out of the way. This US Census Bureau individual who was there presenting on the topic stated that they would not be sending to PO boxes. And the PO boxes, they said that they know that people have them, but they are going to make sure that they contact them personally. And I said, "Well, you will have difficulty getting through a locked gate, and if there's no trespassing sign, just because you're from the government doesn't mean you can enter." So I said, "There's also other things that people do in rural areas, not only in New Mexico, but elsewhere, that will prevent you from coming onto their property, or at least scare you off of it." And the other thing is, they did say that they were going to hire half a million census takers across the United States. They're in the process of starting to do that, and they encouraged us to put out that there are census positions available. Bad news is, there's not enough money according to the population institute to actually do the census, because they want it done right, and that they should be asking for 4.3 or 4.5 billion rather than 3.8 to get it done. And then the third one is the question on citizenship status that the DOJ has requested be placed on the actual census. There seems to be consensus among the National League of Cities and some of our Congressional representation that this has traction, because there is one person and one person only that decides the questions on the census. So you can send letters, just like everybody else has been, to the Secretary of Commerce, Ross. He has to provide the questions by the end of this month to the Senate, who just can't do anything about it, although there is the potential of withholding funding from various things and doing things. But the concern is, and it seems to be a bipartisan concern in some Congressional, you know, representation in different states, that, you know, because the census is supposed to count the number of people we serve, not by citizenship. It's about the people that live in our communities, live in our counties, live in our states, so that the number of representatives are distributed appropriately, proportionately. It's not just that, it's funding. It's funding coming to the cities, it's funding coming to the counties, it's funding coming to our state. Depends on that count. And we could lose out if it was done incorrectly, and then the whole PO box thing, and if there isn't enough money. So we can kind of go through all of that. So I would tell you that the folks in Texas are concerned about getting more representation of a certain party. We are concerned about funding, and that's what the National League of Cities, that's what the New Mexico Municipal League is concerned about, is the actual funding. I'm not going to go into the politics, you know, of parties or anything like that. It's funding, period. Representation, yes, is important, but it's not necessarily one party or the other. So Senator Udall has sent letters, Representative Lujan-Grisom has sent letters, Ben Ray Lujan has sent letters, Martin Heinrich's office has sent letters over and over again to the Commerce Secretary. I cannot tell you what Representative Pierce is doing, because we don't know. And we did not have the opportunity to meet with him, and it was a very brief meeting that we had with his aide. So I just want to kind of go through that pretty quick. So if you want to start sending letters, make sure that if you send letters, you send them to the Secretary of Commerce, Ross, and that you do it soon, and that you don't harp, you harp on representation in the general sense, not as a political sense, and that you harp on funding. Funding, funding, funding. Because if we don't know who we're serving, we can't serve them if we don't have appropriate funding or representation. So. And the last one is the F-16. I did speak with Senator Udall. I was really pleased, the Municipal League is very concerned about this, because if there is a violation of the NEPA, National Environmental Protection Act, which is what people are believing, they think that this can happen anywhere. It was even more upsetting when we heard at the Western Municipal Association from, I believe, the Under Secretary for, Secretary Zinke stating that they are streamlining and pulling out all the stops to streamline the NEPA process to one year right now. They are working on it. And we all kind of sat stunned, not really understanding what that meant. So this is of concern to the entire League, because this can happen anywhere if, where they're left out. Whole communities, because they are small, they're out, you know, in rural areas, can be left out of the process. So I wanted to say to the mayor that I provided the letter that you gave me, that you had sent to the wing commander. I also provided a synopsis with a map that Counselor Eamon Smith had provided of the meeting that occurred. And the letter was, as Bill Folgeney from the Executive Director of League said, and as Senator Udall said, was very well-written, and I appreciated the information that you had provided. I'm waiting for information from the aide, Senator Udall's aide, that is directly working on it to make sure we're sending our concerns to the right place. Senator Udall believed that the letter you had sent to the wing commander was appropriate, but, and it should go there, and that concern should be addressed there, but at the same time, I wanted more specific information from the aide that's working on it, and I haven't received that yet. And then the other person I heard from was the aide from Senator Heinrich. They're going to, the Chief of Staff met with us, he said he would get that aide in direct contact. I wasn't able to talk about it, because she was there really briefly with Representative Lujan-Grisom, but I left information for her, and I gave information to Ben Ray Lujan, because I wanted them to understand and know what was going on in the area, just because in a general sense, they represent all of us, even though they have very specific districts, they need to know that this is happening. So I did not have an opportunity to give it to Representative Pierce's aide. So that's my update from DC. I hope to have more information at our next meeting, so that I can give more specific information about who to contact regarding this F-16 concern, and how to make sure that the letters are effective. But once again, I just want to reiterate, everybody is writing the Secretary of Commerce, Ross, but it seems like they're going to, he's going to probably put it on the, that question, citizenship's going to be on there. The concern is, if it's a mandatory question that you won't be counted unless you fill it out, people won't fill it out. So that was another thing that was brought up by the Population Institute, so. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Beddison, for all of your work. Counselor Canno.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things. The first thing is, I've received a lot of calls from residents in, on the Kimberly Street, in the Kimberly Street area, regarding the construction on PA Road and the fact that they're concerned that Kimberly is going to be used as the alternate route during that construction. The Department of Transportation has decided that Kimberly Road will be used as an alternate route. It will not be the only alternate route, but it will be used. The Department of Transportation is supposedly going to have some planning meetings for the community. As soon as we know when those are happening, it'll be posted on the town website, so that hopefully community members can attend. And also, we'll be posting the number of, the phone number of the project manager, so that you can send your concerns directly to that person. That's probably the best way to do it, because it was a Department of Transportation decision, it was not a city decision. The other thing is that my district is going to be the first to do the community project that goes with the Territorial Charter Day celebration this year, and it'll be on April 14th, which is a Saturday. The projects, we're actually going to have two of them. There's going to be a raised bed garden that is going to be put together at the Volunteer Center, and there's also going to be a park in the Brewer Hill area that is going to be refurbished in a lot of different ways. There's a lot of things that need to be done at that park. So I'm hoping that a lot of people in the community will want to take part in that. Residents in the area will be receiving letters with a little bit more information, and a couple of local businesses are hopefully going to provide some lunch, so it should be a really nice day. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a question. Those that are going to be working on the park, what town do they show up and where do they show up at? Do you know?
Mr. Marshall? If still preliminary, Mayor, we're looking at probably, we'll attend to two, and probably regardless of what job site you want to work at, we'll meet at the park.
Okay.
And then we can go to different projects from there.
Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for you, Mr. Marshall, for Mr. Brown. Is there, is it illegal for people to put used furniture on the sidewalks so other people can take them?
Mayor, Counselor, um, yes. The sidewalks need to be maintained clear, so that you have access for the pedestrians and the mobility assistance devices that any of them might use. So there's not, there's not any, very few sidewalks that would allow an inclusion of any kind, and still allow the proper access.
Same thing on the state highway, or have to send the road off?
They can do it on the side of the road, for a short period of time. Like a curb lane. Can you reset your?
Would it be illegal also, like on the side of the road? Like say, for instance, up on Cooper Street? If some people were to put something there for other people to take, rather than take it to the dump? It would be illegal with it?
It would probably not be a major concern unless it was left there for an extended period of time. If somebody didn't come get it, then it can become an issue with traffic.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like, we have a yard waste program that the city will come twice a year, pick up large items or branches and stuff, and we ask that they put it on the side of the road, makes it the curb, and we'll go pick them up. So that's basically the same concept, is it's intended to be picked up fairly quickly. If somebody's not, if you leave it out there more than a day, it's probably a good idea that you bring it and take it to the dump.
Okay. Thank you. Also, I attended a meeting here on the flyovers here last week, and during that meeting, I listened to the people, and they were very, very irritated by it. I cannot blame the people for being, being kind of rude. I think that our top people, the state leader, the governor, and all those people, I think they were aware of the things that were going to happen, and they just threw it on Grant County, and it caught everybody by surprise. I don't think that was the right thing to do, even though the Air Force, everybody, every military installation needs some sort of training. But if you do something like that, let the people know what's going to happen, don't just throw it on them. And I hope the state of New Mexico doesn't allow it, simply because if they're going to do it for the money, they're doing it for the wrong reason. Listen to the people, the people that are on there that live here, not the people from Washington DC or the Air Force personnel. This is a sacred place. I am for military training, but only in the right procedures that has to be taken by the military. We are going to have a flag ceremony on March 28th for the Green Ambulance Day. The city has donated an American flag and a state flag, and the LULAC Council Number 8003 is going to donate the POW flag, and we are going to have it at golf park, and hopefully we can be there, we can be there by 10 o'clock in the morning.
And the reason we're having that is because we've got?
The poles lit up, so they can, the flags can stay up.
Okay. And also, one more thing. We, the Knights of Columbus, and are going to go in partnership with the Copper Country Senior Olympics, and we will be having, or they will be having a prize bingo at the Knights of Columbus, and this is going to be for the benefit for the Copper Country Senior Olympics, for they raise some money so they can have different functions throughout the year. And it's going to be a prize bingo, and your admission will be $5 per card, and hopefully the people will attend. And I think it's for a very good cause. Thank you. Oh, and one more thing, I like this early morning meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ray. Counselor Eamon Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, I only have two items. I want to thank the voters in District Two for coming down and for us, and reelected me to finish. Thank you. And I also want to thank all of the residents and people who came out to the meeting last Thursday. There were only 400 people there. If you want to find more information, the Healy Resources Information Project has established a website called Peaceful Skies, and they are funneling all kinds of information there. And I know that there are numbers of citizens who are continuing to gather information about appropriate ways to respond, who to get the right information to, and really what this environmental impact statement is going to entail. So there's a lot of work going on there, so if you have more questions or want to get more information, I want to encourage you to, in your search engine, put in Healy Resources Information Project, and you'll find that place there.
Thank you. Any other comments, Counselor?
One more.
Go ahead, Counselor Ray.
Congratulations to you guys for getting back on again. We need to have it intact.
Thank you. I just have a few comments. I'm really excited about these community cleanup and service projects, and that's one of the, one of the nice things that's come out of the Territorial Charter Day celebration. And I want to thank all of those who participated in that. There will be three more, I think, or is it two more this year?
Three.
Three more, so four altogether. Along with that, at my last Monday with the mayor, well, let me back up a little bit. Before that, at one of our council meetings, we had some public input of people who were concerned about the trash, alongside Highway 180 coming from Demian and Highway 90 coming from Lautzberg. I contacted our district representative, Trent Doolittle, and asked him what the state's responsibility was for cleaning those up, and he said, "Basically, we come down once or twice a year, and that's it." He said, "If you're interested in another avenue, there's the Adopt a Highway program." And so he sent me all the material on that, but the Adopt a Highway program still only requires the people who adopt that area to clean it up twice a year. So that's not nearly enough, based on how quickly those roads get littered. At my last Monday with the mayor, I had quite a few people who came in expressing the same concern about, about the trash. And a number of them were willing to actually roll up their sleeves and not only work picking up that stuff, but also helping to organize other groups in the community to do the same thing. So I'm seriously considering forming a little task force of people who would continually be looking at that, talking to community organizations, trying to schedule days throughout the year when we can have those cleanup projects. So if any of you have any suggestions for me, please let me know a little bit later. I'd appreciate it. The other thing is, the Votary Club is having a fundraiser this Friday at 6:00. On the back table, there's some flowers like that. If you'd like to know more about that, you can pick one up. Okay. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the February 27, 2018 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Eamon Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd love to approve minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of February 27, 2018.
Have a motion and second? Counselor Ray, thank you. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public input. I think there's two people signed up for public input. First is Mr. Raul Torreto. Pretty hot, too, if you would, the president.
Thank you very much. I think I've been down this road a couple times. Mayor, Counsel, I would just like to start off with congratulations, Mayor, for being reelected to the council, and Lopecano, and the Dame Smith. It gives me great pleasure that we actually have seen such progress here in the town of Silver City. And not only that, I would also like to kind of congratulate the other municipalities, because we're all in it together. And it gives me great pleasure that we do have an individual from here in Silver City that is actually going to be a nominee for the Lieutenant Governor. Jari Morales is a very big deal, due to the fact that, well, I went to the convention, and Lopecano was there, and it was a madhouse, but it is so nice that we have somebody in the southwest that actually is going to be, hopefully, represent us here in the southern part. June 5th, the primary's coming up, it's just around the corner. I asked the people out there, please, it is very important for people to get out there and vote. I thank the community, I thank Grant County for having the confidence in my office, and I thank my people. But once again, I just want to say here, congratulations on your victories. Thank you very much, and you guys have a fantastic day.
Thank you. Ms. Kingsley, I think you head signed up next.
I have just a few comments. First, I'd like to thank the people of Silver City and Grant County for their very intelligent comments during the US Air Force meeting regarding the flyovers in the Hila Forest. And I would particularly like to thank Kyle Johnson of Kourou for taping the entire two and a half hours of comments and replaying it on Kourou, and for asking Air Force expert Alan Schaefer if the entire audio tape would be entered into the record related to the draft EIS preparation that he is now heading up. And Mr. Schaefer confirmed to Kyle Johnson that it would. I think all of this community owes Kyle an extremely deep debt of gratitude for the work that he did and the fact that that information is now being replayed for the communities in Silver City. Those comments that were made during those two and a half hours document the legal risks that the Air Force will need to analyze in order to complete their EIS of potential damage to the Hila, quote, wilderness character, which is a legal mandate, endangered species, wildlife habitat, and biodiversity of the Hila Forest. Because of those comments, the US Air Force will also be required to analyze the extremely high risks of wildfires and permanent damage to the Hila, chemical pollution and toxins that may be deposited in the soil and/or water, and the damages to homeowners, landowners, local businesses, and the long-term economic viability. local businesses, and the long-term economic viability of tourism for the Town of Silver City as the gateway community to the Hela National Forest. All these issues raise questions of a very high liability for lawsuits against the U.S. Air Force at any time in the future. What was surprised about, though, at the meeting, however, was that Katz was not present to videotape the event. And perhaps Councilor Ray can speak to that. Second, I'd like to briefly acknowledge that I recognize the town's recycling committee is entirely advisory, with authority only to research and provide the town with its findings, and no authority whatsoever to write grants and/or establish new policies. Nevertheless, I would like to summarize my research on recycling glass to this point for the council because, number one, I haven't yet been appointed to the committee, and second, because the deadline for the annual 2019 Recycling and Illegal Dumping Fund grants is next Friday, March 23, 2018, and there are significant funds for those grants. The most recent data for the Town of Silver City shows that in 2016, the town dumped 203 tons of glass into the landfill, which is about 1,068 cubic yards of glass, or 406,000 pounds of glass dumped at a reported cost of $43 a ton. So that the cost of glass tonnage that was dumped in 2016 alone was $8,900 approximately. And given that Alibaba lists at least 20 glass pulverizers that range between $1,800 and $20,000, and given that glass cullet can now be used or sold as industrial waste for multiple purposes, and because glass cullet can replace up to 20% of Portland cement and concrete, and the city of Austin finds that the cost of producing the cullet itself as a recycling effort at $5 to $6 a ton makes it competitive for any of the other aggregates they're going to purchase to actually lay concrete. The Town of Las Cruces now provides the public with free five-gallon buckets of cullet, pulverized bottled glass, to use for water filtration, cement additives, and/or trails and garden path landscaping or amendments, besides a lot of additional industrial uses and manufacturing for this repurposed product. If I'm appointed, I will provide this research to the maintenance, facilities, development, and utility departments. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is reports, and we had a report by Judge Timothy Aldridge, but he is not here. So we will move to the next item, staff reports. Mr. Brown, do you have anything?
The only thing I have is that the Affordable Senior Housing Living finally did close, and they should be starting construction this spring. So they're going to get started here pretty soon, so it's, it's a, it's a very promising. Councilor Bass.
Yes, sir. Other questions?
Councilor Bass.
Do they have an expected date? I think originally they said it ought to be 2019. Then it might be.
Yeah, it's still on schedule.
Okay, great. Thank you.
2019, so. Other than that, I don't have anything unless you have some questions.
I also noticed that on College, they're beginning to do the survey and marking of the streets.
Yeah, that project's scheduled to start on, on Monday of next week. Starting...
I was saying, could we sort of have a standard procedure during that construction of an article in the paper periodically letting people know what's going on and what, you know, if there's alternate routes and what streets will be closed, et cetera?
We can advertise the alternate traffic plans, because the traffic plan changes as construction moves on, so yes, we can advertise those.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, construction on Silver Street is going to start here. I believe at the same time, the Highway 15 is going to start.
Right.
But Silver Street is only scheduled for 45 days, so it's not the six months of Highway 15.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for foresight, too, because they were digging over there, and I stopped and talked to Robert a little bit, and he said they were changing the size of the water line through there as well, so.
Yeah, we're going to have street construction going and upsize the water lines in there for future growth.
Thank you for that. Next item is new business. Next on the agenda is Item 11A, the approval slash disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for the Tour of the Hela Beer Garden at 820 North Bullard Street on April 21, 2018, with alcohol service from noon to 7:30 p.m. Liquor license holder one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, liquor license number 63013, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, and two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, liquor license number 67085, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico. I believe the race director of the Tour of the Hela, Mr. Jack Brennan, will make that presentation.
Good morning, Mayor and councillor and city staff. I'm Jack Brennan, race director for Tour of the Hela. And yes, we're applying for a beer permit for our downtown critarium, April 21st. Little Toad will be providing the fencing, the beverages, the setup, and we're applying for the same location we had last year, which is at the Bike Works location at the corner of Bullard and College. Last year, we applied for use of, partial use of some streets, but this year, we're not doing that. Teresa Daubertine. Well, last year, we had the idea of putting up little bleachers for people to sit on behind the fencing, and that didn't really work out all that great. So we're just going to do fencing on the property itself and not be in the street at all for the, for the beer garden. That's what I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Brennan? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of two public celebration permit applications for the Tour of the Hela Beer Garden at 820 North Bullard Street on April 21, 2018, with alcohol service from noon to 7:30 p.m. Liquor license holder number one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, liquor license number 63013, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, and number two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, liquor license number 6708I, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico.
Is there a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Connor?
I have spoken. My motion is stated.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions or comments from the general public? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 11B. I'm the sponsor of this one, and it's the approval slash disapproval of a design concept for Welcome to Silver City signs. Mr. Marshall, could you, could you make your presentation from the podium? And before you do that, I want to thank all of those who have been involved in this process. Over the course of quite a bit of time, we've had extensive input from the community. We've had reviews by members of the community, so there's been no lack of opportunity for people to provide input, including our council. And I'd like to thank Mr. Marshall and Mr. Brown and Ms. Embig, and I'm not sure who else was on your final committee, but I'd like to thank all of those who participated on that. Mr. Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor and council. You know, this has been a lengthy process, and I'm only going to speak first to the second phase of the design coming up with one. At the council's request, we went out to the public and requested design concepts be submitted. We had 22 concepts that were submitted to the town for consideration. That's 22 different pieces of art. From little over, probably a little over half of that were actually separate people. So following that, we placed the designs on Facebook, as well as holding two public meetings on September 13 of 17 and on September 19 of 2017. We got the most input from Facebook, with 50 contributions of either an actual comment where they voted, or they liked a certain design. The next was email, and we got 41, and then phone, and then the two meetings provided, between the two of them, another 14 votes on the design. So we then took the design and had a committee of staff and artists in town, and I'm not too sure if they want the acknowledgement, so I haven't asked her, so I'm not going to say her name. But she's a local artist. We went over all of the designs, and considering the votes and the effort that people put into attending the meetings and actually contributing to the process, we wanted to respect that. So we came up with two designs that were very close in the public's eye, and submitted that to Occam Engineering, which is our local engineering firm, and they created the design that you have before you on the, on your packet. The, the design is the combination of the two submissions, and the font for Silver City is the museum font, and that is, that is not a generally available font, so it took some effort to recreate it. I would encourage, if you have comments and stuff, I, we have a recommendation on the brick. The brick is, is to symbolize the red Silver City brick that is very historical in our community. And one of the design suggestions that we'll put forth to the engineer and, and design firm to make sure it's not going to run up our cost is the, you'll notice around town where the red brick is used, that over many of the entryways and windows, there's like an eyebrow where the brick is turned to a different, and so we'd like to cap the top of the, the design, the sign with the eyebrow type symbol, made out of the brick veneer. So we'll propose that to them. If it's going to cost us a ton more money to implement that, then we would suggest we not do that. Did you, was that enough, Mr. Mayor?
Does the council have any questions? Councilor Connor?
I have two, actually. The first thing is, how much is this going to cost, approximately?
So we don't know where, until we get a final design approved, then it goes into construction documents, and once we see those, we'll have an idea.
And then the other thing is, can we make changes to this? The reason I ask is because right now, it's grammatically incorrect. There needs to be some kind of punctuation at the top. If not, it says, Welcome Silver City, welcome to you. So there needs to be an upside-down exclamation point and an exclamation point. How many of you knows?
So, yes, we can propose that. We, we also, we want to be careful. We're, we're making a very blunt statement, not a sentence.
I know. But let me tell you, every Spanish speaker that speaks correct Spanish is going to be really annoyed if it's not like that, including one that I have to deal with every day, so I don't hear about it. So I'm going to have to insist that we put those exclamation points if we're going to do that.
If you would send that to me by email, I'll make sure that that gets put in there.
Councilor Bass?
Well, I agree with Councilor Connor, because that's what I was going to say, is that we need something to make sure that it indicates also, I think the exclamation points, it's an excitement that you hear. The welcome to you is just another way of saying it, so I mean, I just think that, yes, so that it, it does show that it's grammatically correct, at least the use of the word. How many of you knows? I have a quick question. What's the, so we have the M.B. knows in, in, in black, it appears, that the Silver City and welcomes you is in silver or steel?
That is the way it was submitted. We are open to suggestions for the color of the fonts.
I, I think the color's okay. I'm just kind of worried about whether or not the steel will pop, but it makes sense to make it look silver because of Silver City. I just don't know if you, you know, how you want to do that. I guess, I'm just concerned about the depth of color of the red brick veneer, whether or not that will really be, that they'll see it well enough.
We share your concern.
Okay, so that, that would be the concern, that I can send an email to you saying that I'm concerned that it's, you know, maybe it needs to be outlined in silver or outlined in black so that it pops out. I mean, that's going to be, costs more money, though.
I would imagine that it's all going to probably end up being the silver, the raw steel color.
Okay, just so that it at least stands out, and it doesn't just go like, oh, I just went by some red brick. I wonder what it said on it. That, that's my, so, okay, thank you.
Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Marshall, is it possible to put down the date of Silver City? Was it when it first started?
So it's, it's absolutely possible, but as far as effect and impact on somebody, it would have to be a significant size, or it's not going to be seen. So if we put "established 1878" down on the, on the corner of the sign, we're going to have to make it, I would have to check. We have a formula that DOT uses for the speed of the highway and the size of the lettering, so it will have to meet that formula.
Any other comments, question?
And we did put a frame with solar lights on it, so that they can be seen at night.
And I, I would think that the, the letters on, in Spanish and English, in the welcoming format, those ought to be the same size, too, so that one's not emphasized over the other. Anyway, thank you, rest of the motion.
So, I just, in closing, I just want to make sure we thank all the people that took the time and effort to, to draft up drawings, attend the meetings, and participate in this, since they requested that we allow them to, and then they did.
Okay, thank you. Do we, oh, Council...
Do we need to finish this first?
Pardon?
I need to ask a question after we finish the process.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Ray?
I move to approve of a design concept for Welcome to Silver City signs.
Okay, do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, second motion is stated.
Thank you. Have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Three, two, one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move, I, I move for a short break.
Okay. Uh, is there a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Who's in favor of a short break, say aye.
Aye.
We call in our meeting back to order. See that Judge Aldridge and his guests have... See that Judge Aldridge and his guests have, have come, and I would like to go ahead and give him an opportunity for his report.
Thank you, Mayor Latner. I apologize, I, I, white button. There we go. Mayor Latner, thank you. I apologize, I, I thought it, I had it scheduled for 10 o'clock. Counselman Ray stopped me one day as I was walking up to court and asked if I could come and just address, kind of in my role as a district court judge, in regards to justice issues and access to justice, and, and issues in regards to just kind of how the process is working. And one of the major issues that we have going on in the community, I think, as I understand from Counselman Ray, is, is our pretrial release and detention, and what's happening there. And so, what I've actually done was, and recently at one of our judges' trainings last December, so a couple months ago, Justice Daniels actually gave all of the new judges, of which I was one, a training regards to this. And this was the packet that Justice Daniels handed out to us, and so what I thought I would do, I'm going to just copy that off, and I'm going to give that to you. You'll note there's some underlying in there. I was taking notes as Justice Daniels was speaking, and those are my underlying things. Now, what I want to go over, and I want to ask, answer all of your questions as best I can. What I will say is this, is procedurally, Judge Laney in the magistrate court has to deal with this on a, on a daily basis, and understands the rules very, very well. Within the district, we've, we've had a meeting early on, dealing, dealing with what are going to be our procedures throughout this, with, throughout the county and throughout the district, as to how to handle these pretrial issues. So, let's just talk a little bit about the actual amendment, and I, I want to go through and note that this was an amendment that was basically a constitutional amendment that was put on the ballot, and as you will see, noted on page one, 91% of our legislators were in favor of this, and the vote was 87%. Now, what the constitutional amendment really did was this, it did a number of things. The first and foremost thing it did was it took away this concept of bail. As you know, New Mexico is usually ranked in the lower 10 on almost all issues when it comes to poverty, and this is something that deeply affects us on a daily basis, and it affects those who are, spend time within our custodial settings a great deal because of the bail bond issues. And so, what, what they did was, is they looked at, and constitutionally, I think the Supreme Court's rules on this back in 1987, but within the state, they started to address this issue, and the way they did was, is they came up with the constitutional amendment. And so, what it also does then, it allows the process for a judge to keep individuals in for either, one, they're a flight risk, or, two, they're considered dangerous. And so, this is really the key issue that we have going on, and that needs the most understanding and education within all of those who are participating within our system overall, and that's this concept of dangerousness. Now, everyone is allowed out automatically if they are not shown to be a flight risk. In other words, if, if you have somewhere on your record that you failed to show up, you could be considered a flight risk, therefore bond may be appropriate. However, if you don't have those issues, and, and the judge cannot make any other findings in regards to pretrial release, or there's past issues of failure, failures under previous conditions of release, the court then is required to let them go unless, and if you turn to page two, number four, requirements of the 2016 constitutional amendment, number four, it says this, "In order to obtain, in order to deny, pretrial release, the prosecutor must file a detention request in the district court and prove by clear and convincing evidence that no release conditions will reasonably protect the safety of any other person or the community." All right? So, we have kind of that dual standard of what we call community safety, and then just individuals who may be, may be a threat to that. So, if you turn to the next page, on page three, you'll notice they established the rule, which is 401B and 409. Now, I want to go over just briefly, because I, you guys can read for yourself, much of what, what Justice Daniels put together. But one of the things that is essential in this, and you'll hear about this when we start talking about, and I know you folks have been dealing with this with Tucasa and all of the other type of our programming regarding our addiction issues going on, because let's look at this, when we really look at this, this is much of kind of these two, you know, our social issue is addiction, and then our, our legal issue is, okay, how do we handle those issues within, and require to be, keep community safety within our communities? Okay? And so, how do we understand the addiction? How do we, how do we understand it within dangerousness realms, and how do we understand it within maintaining public safety overall? Okay? And what they're looking at is developing what we call risk assessments. And so, when we start hearing about Tucasa and the stepping up program coming in, which we've, we've been meeting just sporadically on, and I think in later April, we're going to start to see much of this start to manifest within this community, and that's this. Okay, so individuals are picked up within our community by law enforcement, they're taken to jail, and then they're released. And so, once they're released, what do we do with those individuals, or how do we assure that they're maintaining their responsibility for community safety? And so, what we're doing is really kind of bringing in what we call a wraparound system, or a, a system that we're able to move them from the jail into possibly a mental health setting, or into a treatment setting, or into those effects, right? Because much, much, many of us, I'll say it this way, I'll include all of us in this, many of us are, are safe if we're not using substances, right? But when we start to use substances, that's when we become unsafe within our community settings, and, and that's the balance that the court has to find. And so, what we're, we're trying to do is implement these concepts of risk assessments that can be utilized for all of our individuals that come within contact of, of law enforcement, our jail and detention setting, settings, and trying to have a standardized approach to them. So, that's one of the approaches, that's supposed to be handled by the Supreme Court this year in 2018, and that will be addressing through stepping up programs and other programs throughout the state. Now, if we turn to the actual statute, and I'll finish up with this, there's also a good article noted on page 12, which the Albuquerque Journal kind of addressed some of these issues, and of course, the issue where we were trying to address is this concept of, this constant revolving door, and how do we, what I call, "cessate" the addiction, because my experience over the last 30 years is, is we've been dealing with the same addiction, moving from one various drug to another various drug, but basically, we have to create a process to cessate that. But if you turn to page 14, it's going to say, "Non-monetary conditions of release," and you're going to see 13 factors there, that once a motion is brought, and again, who has to bring the motion? The prosecutors, okay? So, so really what we're asking here, to a great extent, is, is that law enforcement, prosecution really needs to develop, develop a well-oiled, well-meshed, you know, communication machine, so that when people who are arrested that are dangerous, law enforcement has to be communicating immediately with our prosecutorial agencies, and as such, appropriate motions can be brought to maintain that safety. So, those are the kind of the links that, that are necessary for this machine to work and to work properly. But once it goes to the district court, what the judge looks at is those 13 factors, then, that, that kind of set that up. Now, I asked specifically Charles Daniels, right? I get to go behind the curtain, and now I'm talking to these folks, and I asked him, I said, "Charlie, let's be real here. So, we've got a family in court, we've got mom, we've got dad, we've got uncles, we've got sisters, and we've got crazy, crazy Harry, the uncle, and he won't quit using meth, he won't quit doing that. How do I, how do I look at that factor as a dangerousness standard?" Right? And he, he very much said this, "Absolutely, that is a danger, that's considered dangerous, and, and the courts are going to uphold that." And I think one of the things that I experienced is, is our understanding of addiction, our interrelationship with trauma is a key essential element in understanding risk, reoffending, and dangerousness. Because like I said, when we are using at those moments, those are our dangerous times, that we have to be able to cessate that, that risk to our community and safety. And so, much of this amendment is designed to deal with these issues. Now, the bigger issue, and how it's all carried out, that's our government officials that we're depending upon, right? That's all of us folks who work within our system and have to communicate on an effective basis, you know, as, as your role as council folks, you've got to make sure all the folks working for you are educated on these issues and make sure everybody is on the same page. So, folks, that's basically what I know about it. You know, I, I think it's essential for us to understand, each of us is our families, because we get a lot of family conversations about this. Families ask us all the time, "What do we do in these cases? I have this situation, I have my son, my, my father, my dad, all of those types of things that we have to deal with within our families." And this is theoretically allowed to help us to deal with these issues a little bit better, while at the same time, maintaining that concept that, you know, until proven guilty, we're free. Any questions?
Thank you, Judge Aldridge. Before you leave, would you introduce your guest?
My guest is Avery Crump. Avery, come on up. Avery is our, is our court reporter, our court monitor. Avery is a graduate of Western University, and we're really thankful at the system, our court systems, to have him, he does an excellent job for us.
Thank you very much.
All right. Please be with you.
Next item is 11C, the approval slash disapproval of request for proposal number 17/18-3P, fire station vehicle source capture exhaust systems. Mr. Brown?
As you see on the, on the recommendation, there are no numbers, and it's because we went out to an RFP, which is based on qualification. This is the only entity that submitted their proposal, and we deemed them satisfactory, and they complied with all the requirements, and so, it's staff recommendation to award the fire station vehicle source capture exhaust system to Air Clean Concepts for 1144-9 Deerfield Road, Cincinnati, Ohio. And, and to that, it's not part of the motion or anything, the cost that they proposed was around 97,000. We have a grant for 96,000. The fire department does have a match at 5%, so we're well within the budget of everything.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Bedeason?
Could you please elaborate, or have the chief elaborate on what this actually is, so the public can know that we're not just like, buying some air? Because that's what it sounds, it says exhaust system, so that's what it sounds like, so.
Counselor Mayor, congratulations, by the way, on your reelection, all three of you. A source capture exhaust system is, to put into layman's terms, the big coils of hose that connect to the fire engine or medical rescue's exhaust, to keep diesel fumes from accumulating into our bays, and to stop the, the intake of those carcinogens by our firefighters at the station. This system is actually designed on a, a moving track, so it is compatible with our tight spaces and historic building. It will connect to the vehicle's exhaust. When we leave on an emergency call, once the vehicle is started and breaks the plane of the door, the system will disconnect itself from the exhaust and return back to its resting position. The, upon our return, we can reconnect the hose, and this drastically reduces the amount of exhaust and diesel fumes that enter the station and, and are breathable by our firefighters.
Counselor Connaught?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of request for proposal number 17/18-3P, fire station vehicle source capture exhaust systems, per staff recommendation, to Clean Air Concepts 11449 Deerfield Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45242.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Ray?
Mr. Mayor, I'll come in.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Next item is 11D, the approval slash disapproval of bid 17/18-4, 32nd Street sidewalk improvements. Mr. Brown?
As you know, this bid has come before you before. It was re-advertised, we got the same one bid, again, their certification is up to date. Last time, we were only going to propose to award bid lots one and bid lots two, but because of all the construction that is going on, Southwest Concrete and Engineering asked that we delay this project a month and a half before they start, because they're doing Silver Street and College Street as well. So, that actually works out, because it'll let it overlap into next fiscal year, and with that, allow me to budget funds for the final bid lot. So, it's staff recommendation to award bid 17/18-4, rebid of 32nd Street sidewalk improvements to Southwest Concrete and Paving, and the total amount of, for bid lots one, two, and three, of $170,168.75 plus gross receipts taxes of $13,613.55, for a total of $183,782.25.
Okay. Any questions? Do you, your motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Bedeason?
I'm going to award bid number 17/18-4, redid 32nd Street sidewalk improvements to Southwest Concrete and Paving, per staff recommendations, in its entirety of bid lots one, two, three, of $170,168.75, so the GRT of $13,613.55, so the total amount of the project is $183,782.25.
Thank you. Your motion, do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Connaught? Counselor Connaught?
If I'm second, I motion is taken.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Next item is 11E, the approval slash disapproval of resolution number 2018-11, a resolution supporting an application for NM Department of Transportation Municipal Artorial Program MAP funding. Mr. Brown?
This is a resolution allowing the support that, for us to submit an application to, to the MAP program. This project is actually to, to a mill and overlay of 32nd Street from Silver to North Ridge, Silver Street, to Ridge Loop. And, and what we're planning on doing is doing the mill and overlay of the road, and then coming back and doing a chip seal over the same, same area, so that way we get a bigger, thicker, longer lasting project than just the mill and overlay.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Counselor Bedeason?
Mr. Mayor, so how does this flow with the one we just did? You know, anything else that's going on?
This itself is solely pavement rehab.
Okay, so, but the scheduling is not-
Oh, no, this, this is just the application, we wouldn't even get an award until late next, middle of next year.
That's what I thought, so I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that it was just-
These will be completely within-
In order to go forward for an application.
If we're awarded, it's probably be a year and a half separation between projects.
Okay, so, in terms of doing that, since it's just a- Okay, so in terms of doing that, since it's just a road project, it's not like we're going to, the streets itself, it's not like we're going to impact the work that's been done-
Oh, no.
-on the sidewalks. I just want to make sure that the public knows it's not like we're just continuing to rip up something we just fixed.
No, this is-
Like we are awarded this.
Yeah, this is solely the street itself.
Okay, great.
Touching into that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2018-11, a resolution supporting an application for New Mexico Department of Transportation Municipal Arterial Program MAP funding.
Do we have a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I have a second question.
Counselor Amy Smith?
Aye.
Any discussion? Full call, please, ma'am.
Counselor Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Amy Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is 11F, the approval/disapproval of the disposal of inventory slash fixed assets. Mr. Brown?
Counsel, per requirements of DFE, when we are removing items from our fixed assets inventory, we need your approval. 90% of what's listed here shouldn't have even been listed in the fixed assets, because it's below the value of a fixed asset, what's considered a fixed asset. But these are pretty much really old stuff that was like a couple hundred dollars or our threshold for a fixed asset right now is $5,000. So these wouldn't even been on the fixed asset list, but we need, these are old things that need to be removed from our fixed assets.
Okay, any questions? Do I hear a motion?
No, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Brown, where did they go?
Actually, all of these were, they were auctioned a couple years ago, but never taken off from the fixed assets. Yeah, so some of them are actually gone. The majority of them are still with us, and probably what we would do is, we can take them to the dump, but I would rather try to take them to restore.
Yes.
And do something like that, rather than take them to the dump.
Thank you, that would be my preference also.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Amy Smith?
I'm moving to approve the disposal of these inventory fixed assets.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Edison?
I second the motion.
Do we have a motion, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
What's to offer, actually?
Next item, under new business, is 11C, appointment to the Recycling Advisory Committee. The chair of the Recycling Advisory Committee has recommended the appointment of Patricia Eileen Kingsley to the Recycling Advisory Committee. If there are no objections from the council, I would like to appoint her.
No objections.
She is so appointed. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have to return.
Do we have a motion, is there a second?
May I second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.